...going on for about a year and a half. And now, I don't know what to do. I'm at a complete loss. I don't know if I want to go up. I love walking out there, but now, it's, uh, seems like it's a danger. And I just want you guys to do something, please. Thank you.
Did you report to the sheriff?
I haven't had time. I'm going there right after, uh, this happened just before I was going to come here today.
So it just happened this evening?
This afternoon, before I-
About what, what time, sir?
About four o'clock. By the time I got home and got dressed, it was, I called, but with, uh, traffic coming into the canyon, they would never got there and I couldn't have got here.
But you did call them?
I did call. And now I'm going to go and make a, a report at the substation now.
Okay. And then, I remember we had talked, you were going to email me-
Right, and I, I actually got a, well, somebody called, I got an email. Somebody said they were going to come out, uh, they needed some more information from me. I sent them, this has been a while ago, so I, I'm pretty sure I sent them some pictures and various other things, and then that's as far as that went.
But remember, I asked you to email me and we were supposed to get together and I never heard back.
Well, you said to, you asked me to, when anybody contact me, to contact you, and nobody's ever contacted me.
I think so.
Yeah, but after, nothing ever happened. I, I did get contacted. I was, said that something, somebody was going to come out and they were going to call me and set up an appointment, and that never happened.
Okay, alright.
So, it's just, uh-
Well, we'll try, we'll try it again. So, um, you're, you're welcome to email me and we can go direct if you're not getting what you, what you believe you need from the city.
Well, something-
I think that would apply to any of us up here.
You know, I, I would-
We're all open to that, we've just been kind of waiting, so, and there has been discussion-
Right.
About what to do.
To me, somebody should just come look. And if somebody comes and look, then that's going to be enough to go, oh yeah, we need to do something. But nobody's coming to look. I can't get anybody to come out there.
Okay, and you're not injured right now, right?
Uh, I got a couple of scrapes and cuts, but other than that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's all the tickets I have filled out. Does anybody else like to speak? Would anybody else like to speak? Besides you.
You get to hear me, and, uh, it's just a brief thank you guys, the council and the city and, uh, the association for a wonderful community event last night, and I didn't get around to all of you, um, but thank you from the bottom of my heart. And, uh, it's a little emotional, uh, not just moving on from the department, but this group right here. You guys have been true friends and not everybody, not everybody gets to say that at the end of their career, that, uh, they've considered all the, all their bosses and, uh, in a government agency, true friends. So, I will hold on to that and, uh, look forward to next time I see you guys. Continue to do a great job here and, uh, continue the path we started here. So, anyway, thanks again and we'll, we'll see you, uh, in not too distant future, I hope. Thanks again.
Thank you once again for all your years of service. They had a, um, going away party for him last night and the place was packed down there. And I remember thinking, I hope there's not a fire, and then I thought, well, maybe I hope there is a fire, they're all here. He's certainly well-loved by the turnout he had and all the, the show of support and certainly going to miss him in the city.
And we'll, we'll keep you updated with whether Dan's doing a good job or not.
Okay, we have a presentation by our sheriff.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council. I rise this evening to honor a very special member of our sheriff's family, Mrs. Jackie Neff, who has been a citizen volunteer with us for over twenty years. Each year, we have about a, a half a million hours of donated time on the part of about two thousand volunteers. And the sheriff very frequently comments that we would not, as a department, be able to do half of the things that we do if it were not for the contributions of the citizens who partner with us. And I think Ms. Neff is the personification of that. Over the last twenty years, uh, she, she's done a lot of amazing things. She started in nineteen ninety-eight, and one of the first things that she did was, uh, help direct traffic at Roy Rogers funeral up in Victorville. She also assisted us during the two thousand and three old fire, when the hills of San Bernardino and the surrounding areas were ravaged by fire. And she worked with us and, and assisted us until, uh, her, her own house, actually the, the palm trees behind her own house burst into flames. So, uh, it's just, it's just amazing and we would like to honor her this evening for those twenty years of service. She has some, she has some remarks that she'd like to make, so I, I think, uh, I'll, I'll just go ahead and have the old adage that, uh, more of her and less of me is a good thing. So, I'll do these, I'll do these real quick presentations. One of them is actually just a real quick letter from the sheriff, and I'll read that. It says, "Dear Jackie, as you separate from, from our volunteer forces, I wish to thank you for the over twenty years of service to the citizens of San Bernardino County. It is not often said, but your dedication and service is truly appreciated. Best wishes from your friends and family in the sheriff's department. Sincerely, John McMahon." And then also, we have her badge that she actually wore for all of those twenty years, and we've actually mounted that on a plaque. And it says, "Presented to Jackie Neff, Central Sheriff's Station Citizen Patrol Unit in appreciation of your dedication and commitment to the citizens of San Bernardino County and the sheriff's department for over twenty years of service, April second nineteen ninety-eight to January eighth two thousand and nineteen." And, and, uh, she, she looks very young to have already been twenty years. I'm, I'm sure we could have another thirty years of service from her, but she's actually chosen to move away from Loma Linda, and her and her husband are actually running an avocado ranch in Temecula now, so. So, the citizens of Temecula's gain is, is the, the citizens of Loma Linda's loss, so thank you very much.
Thank you to Sylvia, our leader and my friend, and Sheriff McMahon, council members, and Mayor. Indeed, I already miss being a part of this awesome team. When I joined the group of COPs in nineteen ninety-six, it was part of the Loma Linda Fire Department, and in nineteen ninety-eight, we were asked to become part of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. Classes included driver awareness, CPR, and first aid, communications, and traffic control, along with other training. I was elected as the first commander, and I ended my twenty-plus years at, with the unit as commander. I held every office at least twice during that time. Duties and events included, as he said, uh, directing traffic, uh, with the, at the funeral of Roy Rogers in nineteen ninety-eight, and, um, exciting to receive a letter and a coin from his son Dusty. Traffic and evacuations at the old fire until, um, the palm tree behind me caught fire. The wind was blowing, um, fire from tree to tree. Searching for Shallow Grave of a Missing Teen in two thousand and three. Directing traffic at the annual sheriff's rodeo. Ride-alongs with deputies and flying in Forty King. Serving cake at Kids Watch. Graduation, working at health fairs, mud runs, golf tournaments, and other events. Touring other departments such as CSI, dispatch, and aviation. Working at and attending the service for Detective Jeremiah McKay, whose EOW was six years ago today. Transporting vehicles via an eerily empty freeway during the Blue Cut Fire in two thousand and sixteen. And of course, patrolling, which sometimes included traffic control, accidents, or searching for missing people. And we'll never forget those lost at the terrorist attack December two twenty fifteen. It was a privilege to serve and be a part of this family. I enjoyed volunteer appreciation picnics, holiday parties, and installation dinners, and I was honored to be selected twenty seventeen Volunteer of the Year. I appreciate this recognition and will cherish it, along with my memories of times and events, but mostly the people. Thank you so much.
So, Jackie, uh, right here. So, I, I was also at that funeral, and I share one of those coins with you. And, uh, for those that you don't know, um, Roy Rogers actually had three funeral services. There was a public service, and then there was a semi-private service, which was the one you're talking about. And then they actually buried him at dusk, in old cowboy fashion. But, uh, I was on the sheriff's honor guard at the time, and I also received one of those coins, so, uh, I guess that's a challenge coin, and that we can do something with that, I think. There's a, there's a secret society, but anyway. Congratulations, uh, thank you very much for all your service.
We wanted, uh, I just, sorry, we don't have good sound here, you can't tell who's talking to you, but, uh, we want to thank you for all your hard work. I mean, given the fact that you're there for twenty years, surprises me that you didn't actually join the sheriff's department. Um, I know you're, from what they've said, you're going to Temecula to help run an avocado farm, but I don't know if you know that there's quite a few avocados are being planted in our hills as we speak, by the Ramirez's, so, have to be successful over there, you eventually kind of work your way back. So, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation in recognition of the in-home care provider workforce and their contributions to the local community, is Juan Carlos Garcia here. Do you want to come up to the-
Sure.
Whereas in-home, whereas in-home supportive services, workers residing in Loma Linda along with other IHSS providers across San Bernardino County deliver quality home care to more than thirty-one thousand of our most vulnerable county residents, including low-income seniors and adults and children with disabilities, allowing them to receive quality personal care in the comfort of their own home. And, whereas the selfless work of home care workers often goes unappreciated and unnoticed, as these dedicated professionals and volunteers form a support network that continues to play a vital role in healthcare delivery for our nation's disabled, infirm, and aging population. And, whereas, the number of residents requiring in-home care will increase in San Bernardino County as our population of those sixty years and older doubles to over five hundred and fifty thousand by twenty thirty. And in order to meet the future demands of caregiving, we must ensure the recruitment and retention of quality caregivers. Now therefore, I, John Lennart, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Loma Linda, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, do hereby proclaim that the City of Loma Linda recognizes the essential work and contributions that the in-home care provider workforce brings to our, to us, and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about the home care and hospice concept of care. Signed this day, the twelfth of February two thousand and nineteen, by Mayor Rhodes Rigsby.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. We really appreciate this recognition because like you just read, the, the labor that these workers provide, the service they provide to the community, because it's done in people's private homes, the, the personal care, it, it oftentimes goes unnoticed and unappreciated. So, um, this is really rare to have a city council publicly recognize the, the work they do, so, we really appreciate it. And I'll let some of the, the workers here, I, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a rep with their, their labor union, but they're actually the people that do the work in the community, so if they'd like to just say their name and who they take care of, is that okay? Thank you. Here, Ms. Lydia.
Good evening, nice people. I am so very glad to represent this, our group, the providers of San Bernardino, but I lived in Loma Linda for almost twelve years. And I am a retired teacher, I am the languages teacher. I, I talk four languages, Portuguese, Spanish, English, and French, some French. But I am so very proud to teach the children and care the people. I help many people that are disability, and, uh, I love to, to cook for the people, to clean the house, to help the peoples, to make everything, translate the letters and everything that they need, and make their life more happy. Signs my, um, churches, the Seventh Day Adventist Church in Loma Linda. And I love, and I sing at the choir, I am artist, and I love everything to do. Thank you very much to stay working in this area, and I would like to ask too, as possible, that provide two houses, not only for our clients, but for our, uh, the members that we work for the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lydia, Ms. Brown.
Hi, I'm Patrice Brown. I take care of three of my family members. And, hard work, nothing about it is easy. I am very proud to take care of my family. We all work hard, whether it's family or whether it's friends, whether it's just clients. And to be acknowledged and to understand is important to me, and I'm not going to cry, but it's important to me and I appreciate it, thank you.
And it's okay if you, yeah, we can come in. Some of our, our members here, I mean, as you can, we're not public speakers, we're not elected, but, um, uh, yeah, some of there, they came out tonight, and so, you want to say a few words, Ms. Maria, and then Pepe. And I, I'll, also, we probably have a couple more in the audience, they were just too shy to come up.
Hello, my name is Maria Leva, and I've been taking care of my mother, and like this young lady said, it's not easy, it's not an easy job. I've been taking care of my mom for four years, and she could be a mean old cuss sometimes, but thank you, thank you very much.
This isn't easy. My name is Zaydi Enda, I've been caregiver since two thousand and eight. Took care of Dad, we lost him two years ago. Take care of Mom. It's not easy, and thank you very much for recognizing the work that, that we all do. Thank you.
Yeah, and so, this really speaks also to the, the value the city places on, on the healthcare, on the healthcare services, so, because where, where we argue as a, as a union that represents home care workers is that they're not just babysitters, they're not just companions, they're a key part of the care team that involves the, the nurses, the doctors. So, um, that, that speaks to the, the values of this city, and we want to thank you again for that. Um, would it be possible to get a, to get a picture with the proclamation?
Sure.
Maybe up here somewhere? Okay. We, I mean, down here, we can, yeah. Thank you. Yeah? Okay. So, if you want, uh-
Yes, let me take a picture.
I'll take the picture, yeah. So, if you guys want to come up here.
Let me take it for you.
If there's any other home care workers here, because we were texting about a hundred of you that actually came by, feel free to join us if you're, if you're here.
I was just going to make a couple of comments. I very much appreciate all that you do, only simply because I'm familiar with a lot of what you do. I work as an occupational therapist at one of the facilities nearby. And, uh, the type of assistance a lot of folks need at the, the hospital is very hard to find, believe it or not. Some of you are fortunate that you're in a position to help your fam, fellow family members, but there's a lot of people out there who don't have families, and their choices are either to end up in a nursing facility, or be fortunate enough to go back in their own homes and have someone to provide for them. And it's truly, truly hard work. I can't tell you how often we hear the challenges that many family members have, and people such as yourself who have to take care of other folks. It's, it's very challenging because these aren't people who are just needing assistance, but they're actually ill. And when someone's ill, it's especially challenging to take care of them, because you're having to worry about their well-being, but also their health. Have to worry about medication, taking care of everything. And a lot of people, it, it's almost a shock when they have to deal with it. We all get to that age where, uh, if we don't have kids, someone's have to come take care of us, because there's not enough, uh, facilities for everybody. And so, uh, we really appreciate everything you do, and, uh, we can hopefully encourage others to do what you do and be able to obviously make a living from it as well, because it's important. So, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is number three, a presentation on community development block grant for project prioritization for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty by our Public Works Department, followed by a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, every year, um, the city worked with the County of San Bernardino to administer the, uh, the community development block, block grant. And this year, the county received four applications, uh, three of which are the public services projects. The first one is the, uh, Samuel County Library for the Loma Linda branch. The second one is Inland Temporary Home, and the third one is Family Services Association, due business as FSA. They provide a luncheon program at our senior center. For the city project, it is for the pavement rehabilitation at Shepperson Drive between Mau Street and Benton Street. Richmond Road from Prospect to Shepperson Street. Poplar Street from Prospect Avenue to Shepperson, and Lamar Street from Mau Street to, uh, Richmond. And tonight, we have a member from the County Library, the Inland Temporary Home, and Family Services Association are here to give us an update on what have they done, uh, this past, past year. So, I would like to welcome, uh, the County Library to present first. Latoya, welcome.
Good evening, good evening council members and city staff. I'm Latoya Courtney, and I'm the branch manager of the Loma Linda Library. So, I want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight regarding our adult literacy program. So, the goal of our literacy program is to assist English-speaking adults to help them read and write at a level that'll help them succeed and accomplish their goals. So, these goals, they often range from applying for jobs to, uh, accessing the internet and even helping their children with their homework. A good goal would be for obtaining GED and other degrees that would better qualify them to enter the workforce and improve their conditions. So, our literacy program serves the community, and the community actually thrives when those living in it are able to reach and learn and sustain their literacy goals. So, according to the most recent data from two thousand and eighteen, San Bernardino County's indicators report, the illiteracy rate has a direct impact on the economy in our country. So, the percentage of families living in poverty in San Bernardino County, it has declined from thirteen point nine percent back in two thousand and sixteen, and now the number is at twelve point eight percent in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, so that is a small change in poverty, but there is still a big opportunity to close that gap and make that percentage even smaller. San Bernardino County's rate of family poverty is higher than the national average and also the state averages. And so, the current number now is twenty-three point nine percent for two thousand and seventeen, where San Bernardino County families whose head of household does not have a high school diploma had the highest rate of poverty. So, these figures have a bearing rate on the economy, and, um, it affects employment, incarceration rates within our entire country. So, what we offer at the library are individual tutoring sessions, and this allows the adult and the learner to come together and meet regularly to help them accomplish their goals that they set out to reach. And our current continuing pairs have carried out seventy-seven tutoring sessions and a total of a hundred and twenty-eight instruction hours for this fiscal year, and it's growing as we continue. Within our library's databases, we offer Job Now, which is a resource to help improve resumes and interviewing skills, and it's also a great tool for our tutors to use as they sit down and help the la, the learner navigate through our literacy resources. We also offer online career high school, and this is a free accredited program, and is offered to parents of children aged five and under. Our basic computer classes, they also allow participants to meet with an instructor, and they get to practice their basic computing skills. And our courses are currently being held Tuesdays at one P.M. So, I'd like to thank you guys for the ongoing support over the years in helping us maintain literacy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as they arise.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
It sounds like you're doing a lot of additional activities that normally we don't associate with the library.
We all think of library people going to check out books. How's that, how's that going these days? Are kids and families coming in to check out books, and how does that vary from year to year? Kids and families, and they're all coming to the library, and so we're seeing an upward trend with our participation. Um, we really see an increase in attendance when we have our summer reading program, and so we actually use the community room here to feature our programs, and we have jugglers and lots of entertainment, so we've been trending upwards. We're reaching our, we're about halfway to our goal of six million circulation for our fiscal year, so we're working very hard. Um, a lot of people don't know about the programs we offer at the library, so promotion is working, Facebook pages, uh, social media, of course, word of mouth in our online literacy program, as well as all the services we offer, um, on our online, um, website. And so, we're seeing upward trends, we're happy. The market night has been drawing in more attention, and so people are visiting us a lot more.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next, we have Jeff Little, uh, from Inland Temporary Home.
Move this here. I'm going to change all the computer stuff here. Good evening, council members, city employees. Uh, my name is Jeff Little. I'm the CEO of Inland Temporary Homes, uh, doing business as Inland Housing Solutions. First of all, I wanted to thank the city for helping us navigate, uh, our office move this summer, uh, from the old Hinkley House on Mission Road to the, um, Fisk, Curtis Fisk, uh, house at Heritage Park. Uh, I can report that, uh, we've had no, no issues, everything's running smoothly, and and staff is very thankful for, uh, the, the nice digs, so, uh, things are, things are running smoothly there. I wanted to give a, a, you know, the city has, and, uh, IT agent had a long partnership, and, and so I'm always looking at data and, and research and evidence-based practices and trying to, um, get better, get more efficient, and, um, keep doing what we're doing well and, and improve where we can improve. And so, I had staff actually run some, some data, I wanted to give a, a little bit of a deeper dive, so we did a four-year, um, kind of a four-year look at some of the numbers, and so I wanted to share those with you, because they were positive results. We've housed, with our Rapid Rehousing Scattered Site, uh, program, we've housed a hundred and sixteen families over the last four years, consisting of a hundred and forty-three adults and two hundred and forty-nine children, that's a total of three hundred and ninety-two individuals. Um, of those a hundred and sixteen families, um, one hundred and six have ended rental assistance based off of last month, so a hundred and six, which means we've ended financial assistance. So, we, we provide some, uh, aftercare, case management, uh, we call it a follow-up program, but that means we are not providing them financial assistance. Out of those a hundred and six households, one hundred of them had successful housing outcomes, which is actually much higher than, than I was expecting, uh, which is a four-year average of ninety-four percent permanent housing success rate, so a hundred, a hundred households out of one oh six. Um, just wanted to say thank you, uh, we wouldn't be able to do it without the city and without the support through the CDBG program, and, uh, with your continued support and, and help, uh, we'll continue providing a service, uh, that's much needed in the community. So, thank you. Uh, any questions?
Just a quick follow-up. I know a few years ago, before your time, there were some challenges financially with the organization- I know a few years ago, before your time, there were some challenges financially with the organization. Are those pretty much behind you, and now you have all the funding you need to keep?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. Things, when I first came on board in 2011, I can't believe it's almost been eight years since I came on board. But yeah, there were some financial difficulties. It was, you know, it was a tough time just in general in the, you know, in the market. And, but yes, we have grown in certain areas to grow and pruned a few programs that weren't necessarily successful in multiple ways. We've looked to expand funding, added a couple foundations and some private donation to help offset public support. And I can report that we're doing well financially. We've added a few additional contracts to provide housing search for some of the other partner agencies, like the VA and Housing Authority and a few other partner agencies. So, yeah, we're doing well. In fact, we're looking, we're growing, you know, for office space. And so, a quick little seed tidbit. Once the engineer, train engineers move out of the two-story house at Heritage Park, I'd love to throw our hat in the ring for some office space growth. So, and I'll talk to Jarb and Conrad in the future if that comes available. We'd love to lease that up.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Next, we have a Family Services Association.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council and staff, and to the residents here in the city of Loma Linda. My name is Tom Donahue. I'm the Program Administrator for Family Services Association for our Senior Nutrition Program. And this is a program that you can't do by yourself. We basically work with three stakeholders. We work with the clients that we provide meals to at the senior center, but also to those seniors in your community that are homebound. And it was, the six degrees of separation we have, it's kind of three degrees in this region. The IHSS workers you work with, we also deliver meals, and we come in contact and work with them. And they are truly doing this, not for a paycheck, they're doing it for their heart and what they can give back. And I think you heard those stories. And we're fortunate to have that kind of energy that we have within our staff. But your funding helps to support us from the community aspect because we have three stakeholders that provide us a successful program. One is our main contractor, the older Americans Act, and we pick up a piece from the state and the county. Then, the clients also contribute to the program. We ideally ask for one to three dollars that they can contribute to it. In Loma Linda, they contribute over seven thousand dollars to the program. That's about ninety cents per meal. And then, your contribution of ten thousand dollars also helps us. We produced over seven thousand meals, reaching a hundred and fifty unduplicated seniors in the city of Loma Linda. And we are seeing this, what you referred to as the silver tsunami. It's not coming, it's here. And as you indicated, the population growth, not only in the county of San Bernardino, but in the state by 2025, seniors will be twenty percent of that population. So, in the State of the State address, it was heartwarming to hear the governor talk about an emphasis and maybe a relook of how we're approaching seniors holistically so they can age well in place, so they can remain in their home and live a high quality of life. And we want to say thank you for your past support for the four and a half years, but also for the staff recommendation to continue that support for the next fiscal year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on our program or on our agency as well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So, staff recommended that the city allocated for fiscal year 2019-2020 of the County CDBG fund to the following. Ten thousand dollars to the San Bernardino County Library, ten thousand dollars to the Inland Temporary Home, ten thousand dollars to the Family Services Association Due Business As FSA, and that's for the public services projects. And then, the remaining a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the pavement rehabilitation within the city. That's in my report.
Okay, we need to open the public hearing? Or did we already do that?
You just did.
Yeah, I'm gonna open it with my little cup here. I don't feel honored enough to be able to wield the mayor's gavel over there. So, I'll just stick with the cup for now. Okay, the public hearing is open. I have three requests to speak. It's Latoya Courtney, Jeff Little, and Tom Donahue. I don't think any of you want to speak again, or you think you had enough? Okay. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public session, hearing. And what's the council's plan?
I'll make a motion that we move it, accepting staff recommendation.
Just a quick follow-up question. The amount that we've gotten CBD grant, has that increased over the years? Has it been consistent, or?
No, sir, it has been decreasing.
Has decreased?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
But what we did is we reduced our portion.
Yeah, we've been consistent with our public contribution for years, and we just reduce our side.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried unanimously. Okay, in an effort to build a crescendo of excitement toward our weed abatement program, we're going to skip ahead to item seventeen and come back to item four. So, hold on to that weed thinking. Oh, I shouldn't say that. We're not in Colorado. I gotta be careful here. Okay, we're gonna have an update regarding the Frank Adobe by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. At the last city council meeting, the councilman, a person, asked me for the status of the Frank Adobe's house. So, the house is, this is, this is multi-view. This is Mission Road. This is California Street. And the boundary in red represent the old RDA properties. The house is located right here, is on the north side of Mission. And it's inside the RDA property. From the street, this is the view from the front. This is a little, look a little bit to the west. And this is the front of the house itself. This is the view for the east elevation. This is a little kind of shed in the back. This is the view to the west elevation. This kind of look down the front of the house. This is kind of, when you walk in the front door, this is the view to the living room. This is one of the rooms to the right. Another room in the back. Let me know if I go too fast. Kind of go through the, what does the house look like inside? Another room right here. Yes, yes. But I will go over that. And this is the kitchen. So, what we have done so far, completed task so far, is we have worked with the county sheriff to increase the law enforcement, to patrol the area. We did secure the building after we found out there's a homeless moving to the area. So, what we did was, we boarded up, we boarded up the house. And then, we also installed the chain link fence around the house itself. Okay? In addition to that, we did install, have our power to the house. So, all this, the light are working inside and out. Yes. Yes, there's a power to the house now. Right there. So, what we did, in addition to have a power lighting to the interior and exterior of the house, we, Conrad just ordered a security, it's a camera.
Simply safe system, but it has to have power. It works with cellular.
So that if somebody broke into the house, they will send a signal to. So, this is a task that we completed. The next step, what we plan to do is, we already have a contact with Cal Fire Crew to come out, clean the site debris. We will have a contract with West Coast Arborists to remove some of the trees up front and trim the trees. We're gonna stabilize the Adobe wall, which is on the east elevation. We have the stucco that fell off, so we're going to stabilize that. We're going to establish irrigation to the heritage trees. What we did was, after the last city council meeting, I went out and met with Gerald Frank and also Mrs. Jim Ship. And I gave Mrs. Ship the little, where's Mrs. Ship? The orange tape so that he will tie the tape around the trees that he thinks is heritage, the old trees that he wants to save. So, we can do that. And then, we're gonna remove, with that volunteer that Joe gonna help us, we can remove the trash and debris. And maybe he will do a landscaping for it. So, that's coming. And so, the city will provide a dumpster to the site, and we can get that place cleaned up. The future task is, as you know, that the city is mandated to sell the property. But what we can do is, we can provide a long-term support throughout the RDA property itself. We might end up putting the condition on the, on the sale of the property that they have to restore the, restore the property in the condition of approval for the future developers. Establish the parking area for the site. And interior preservation with an effort to utilize the building as a museum. And this is given from Mrs. Jim Ship. Here you go. Historical slash education site. So, we plan, hopefully, we can do that to preserve the building. And then, also provide a restroom facility on-site. Right now, there's already existing restrooms, so we will provide the water to the site for the house itself and to irrigate the orange tree. That's our plan. And we have a lot of members of the public are here to give us some input. So, that's in my report. Thank you.
Well, I think it's important to note that as far as the city, we don't even own that property. That is, that is former RDA land that is now technically controlled by the successor agency. So, right off the bat, I want to commend our city manager because these are a lot of steps and a lot of effort with city expenditures when this is not a city responsibility or on city land.
Yes, this is our general fund.
I appreciate your effort for historical landmark, but I would also encourage the community to try to organize and figure out a long-term solution because in all reality, this is not something that we as a city are even supposed to be taking on. But we're taking it on because of the community interest. So.
Okay, there are two requests to speak. The first is Jim Ship.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The city bought the Frank Adobe, and it's adjoining Citrus Groves in 1964. So, the current ambiguity about ownership is really not our fault, your fault. It's the state's fault if we have to blame anyone. But it was always the responsibility of the city from the time it purchased that historic property to preserve and protect it. And as you know, the house was occupied until some months ago, a couple of years ago, when rather abruptly, the citrus management quit and the occupant left. And immediately, Jarb and staff had to scramble. But I want to not allow us as a community, or you as a council, to simply say, well, it's not technically ours because we don't really legally own it right now. We, as a city, have owned it since 1964. The fact that it was given to or transferred to the RDA and then the mess with the state occurred does not remove from us the responsibility to see that it's cared for. The nomination of the Frank Adobe to the State Register of Historic Places was approved in November 2002 by the state Historic Preservation Officer in a legal setting. I was there at the time, and the nomination was unanimously supported by the city council. So, it has been our intention as a community since 1964 to preserve and protect this property. I think the frustration that happens for the community now is it's very hard to get our head around the difficulty of an ambiguous ownership or an ownership that is in limbo. In 2002, when the, when the house was listed on the state register, University Village and Orchard Park were in play. There was an immediate movement to develop that area because the flood plain restriction had been removed. It was an assumption that within a year or two, that property would be sold, that it would be developed. Money would come in as a part of a condition of approval. The Adobe would be restored. It would, there would be a citrus heritage park of some sort there. And then, that didn't happen. We had a recession. We had different standards for development. Developers lost interest, and it went into a period of very much uncertainty. My concern is that historic properties in California are in immediate peril. I'll give you an example. Crystal Springs Ranch in Redlands was in private hands. I was acquainted with some people who were trying to get it put into some sort of conservancy where it could be protected. There was a stagecoach stop, a pioneer cabin there. There was a hope that it would become a living history place, some sort of a wildland preserve in combination historical society. And last week's paper noted that the owners had just bulldozed the historic buildings on that property because they had allowed people to move in, and there were homeless encampments and vandals who had destroyed parts of the building. And the owners felt that it was no longer safe or reasonable to try to preserve them. As we see this sort of thing happen, as we see the ostensia move out of county control into a local foundation control, as we see other historic properties in Montclair starting to falter, those of us who care about our community's history really don't want to participate in that. We don't want to see something that is dear and important to us and has been officially marked for preservation just go into decline. And I know that there are supporters in the community here who want to do something. They're people of action. They're not lawyers, and they're, you know, not politicians. People who would like to trim some trees and pull some weeds and paint some things and get a new roof on the Adobe and protect its Adobe walls. And so, I would encourage you, take seriously the mantle of responsibility that we took on as a city in 1964 when we said, yes, we're gonna take this over. And we know this is the oldest building in Loma Linda. This is, this is a pioneer property. This family goes back to the Western movement of covered wagon pioneers and the gold rush period. And we want to do the right thing for it. So, I would encourage you to help us to legally and safely do whatever is necessary to preserve and protect the Adobe so that when ownership can be restored locally, we have something to show for it. And the Loma Linda Parks and Historical Society has been around since the 1980s. And we stand ready to assist with that and to help turn it into a museum, a living history center, an archival center, whatever is feasible. But we don't want to lose it in the meantime and say, you know, it used to be there. We've got some nice pictures. Thank you.
And I totally agree with what you just said. I just, I just want everybody to understand there are limitations to our power and authority.
The question I guess I would have is, Mr. Duper, what responsibility does the successor agency have in accepting ownership of a piece of property that is state-registered and is earmarked for preservation?
At this point, they have full responsibility.
Okay. So, how do we as a community hold the successor agency responsible to put money, effort, time, organization into volunteer efforts to preserve it?
Those are things.
Those are things, those are, those are the challenges that I think we all, we're not, we're not sure. And, you know, it's, it's hard for us to offer advice on some of those legal issues. However, I think your registry is probably the best position to take, and is if that, if the building is registered historical landmark, then it makes things a little bit, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Then the successor agency has to address that and deal with that. But it, it just, we have to be real clear, as far as a city, we can do a lot of these things on our own voluntarily, but, but as far as what ultimately happens to that property, maybe the city attorney or, they can weigh in on a little bit.
Our, it's really a two, a two-phased approach. First is to protect and preserve what's there, which we're doing, securing and alarming it, cleaning it up and preserving what's there and not letting it degrade any further. And then the mechanism we have to go forward with that is through the planning process and the entitlement process. So whoever buys that property, they're not going to buy it just to let it sit fallow. They will build something on that, and part of their entitlement to be allowed to build that will be to preserve and to restore or do something with that building along the lines of what we're talking about. The other buildings that are movable, we've moved them to Historic Park. The developers had to pay for the cost of that, had to place them, and a couple of them had to stabilize them with roofs and siding and other things to put them at least so that they're viable. This building doesn't need to be moved, so there's some latitude there to require some restoration and refurbishment of that building on those developers when they get to that property. Thank you.
Just, just to make sure I'm clear. So you've heard the city's plan. Is there a concern? Is there something you want to do between the point of someone taking over the land?
Well, yes. The, the, the big concern is that the appearance of the Adobe is as somewhat secure but abandoned, and it keeps being reoccupied by homeless people, which, who will eventually burn it down or burn down the parts that are not Adobe.
That was my concern, seeing the torch in that picture right away, that, that.
Yeah. That's why we have the security system, interior motion sensors, door sensors, glass break sensors, and then any time those are triggered, it immediately, just like a home, a home security system, will notify the sheriff's department, will get a response there. The other concern is that the, the east wall of the Adobe does not have an overhang. The porch does not wrap around on that side, and the stucco is crumbling off of the wall, leaving the Adobe exposed, and then during this very wet winter we're having, allowing water to pool between the Adobe that's falling, or the stucco that's falling off and the Adobe. It's essential to keep an Adobe dry. So the community members who've come out and looked at it are quite concerned about structural damage to that one wall if we don't take some effort to either reseal the wall, remove the stucco so water can't stand between the stucco and the, because there's a gap of a couple of inches. So it would be like a pocket that would allow water to soften the Adobe. And there's already been some structural damage. It's not too severe yet, but it could get a lot worse. And I guess my frustration would be, we thought 2002, we were imminently going to see development there. Well, you know, now it's 2019, so 17 years later, it hasn't happened. The Adobe cannot sit abandoned and unattended for another 17 years. It will not stand that long without a new roof, without some attention to structural issues, without some drainage work. It, it doesn't have to have a complete restoration in the immediate future, but it does need attention.
And is there some community effort to do that?
Yes, there is. There are others who will speak to that.
So you're notifying of us of it, or are you asking for permission or asking for money? I'm not sure exactly what the goal is.
Staff, yes, all of the above. Staff is aware of volunteers who are willing to come forward, but we, we do feel, because it's been a long time, numerous changes in the city council since 2002, certainly since 1964, that the, that the history and the, the level of our community's responsibility to the Adobe, I feel, has not gone away, but the people who knew about it back in those days, decades ago, are no longer with us.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and this is just a, just a minor point, but how did the city purchase it in 64 when it wasn't incorporated until 70?
Joe?
I'm not quite sure.
From the J.J. Ramirez Ranch? I'm not sure it was 64.
Okay.
That's when Mr. Ramirez.
It was sold from the family in 64. Okay.
That's a good question, yeah. You caught me on the math.
Right, because I mean, I'm just doing the math, I was trying to forget when the city took title of this property.
Yeah, I haven't seen title transfers, I don't know exactly what happened and when, but there was a belief when the, the, when the redevelopment agency owned it, I don't think anyone had a clue that that would, we would lose local control at that point. RDA ownership was as good as city ownership at that time.
Well, I mean, the fact that we're putting an alarm system, obviously we have control over it. I mean, it's not mincemeat. So I guess it's, it's a matter of deciding how much more we want to put effort to it. But I'd like to hear what the community has to say regarding what their plans are, so we can figure out if maybe there's collaborative effort that we can work together on this.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Frank.
Good evening, councilmen and city staff. As you know, I'm Joe Frank, and I'm here to fight for the Adobe. I agree with what Mr. Ship said 100%. He cut my speech in about half, so I'm not going to belay by going over that again. I, I do have a couple of exceptions. Mr. Duper says that it's a successor agency. I've done some research on that, and from what I can find, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the successor agency is Loma Linda, and it's a sole successor, it's not a joint successor.
It's changed.
When did it, when did that change?
It's last summer.
Where, does that mean there's more investors in, in it?
Yeah, it's a little more complicated. We have, we have control now basically of the county. That's control, I mean, our city attorney handles that.
Yes, this whole dissolution of the redevelopment agencies is a process. Initially, the city was the successor agency, now it's gone to the county. And the goal of the successor agency is to dispose of the properties that are contained or owned by the agency in order to generate funds for the taxing authorities within the county. And that's a mandate from the state legislature, which we have no control over, and, and the state supervises that whole process very carefully. So we, we have very little control over that at this time, other than, as has been indicated through the planning and development process, which is, is where we will have leverage in the future over development and of the property. But the funding source, it used to be the redevelopment agency, and the ownership was taken from the city.
Is the ownership, are they aware of the Adobe being historical?
I presume they, they absolutely would be.
They have some obligations on the historical commission of the state, and the RDA's not, not, are not in existence now, so why wouldn't that supersede it?
The historic designation and the limitations on development, those obligations all run with the land to whichever entity would end up acquiring the property from the successor agency for development presumably. They would then be subject to those rules on historic preservation, and the city would enforce those as part of the development process and impose conditions of approval to carry out those legitimate preservation.
I guess what I'm saying is, the city is one of the successor agencies. Correct?
No.
Oh, it's not?
It, it's, the county controls it at this point.
So the, so the, basically the county owns the land?
The county successor agency.
Don't, don't give it, don't give us wrong. We still would like to preserve the house.
I understand.
And that's, that's why, that's why I went out of our way to, to use the general fund money and willing to do the improvement to the house. So, so we really would like to preserve it.
Well, we just have to be, we have to be careful, because there's, there's probably a limit, again, because... As, as much as you all are concerned, and some of you are residents of the city and some are not, we answer to the residents of the city, which, that's where our general fund money comes from. So we are now expending money on something that is technically not in, under our control. So I, I just, I just, all the things that he listed to me are huge, because, I, I don't know if you know our city manager.
Yeah, I do.
There was a comment made last night at, at their retirement, that something about rubbing two pennies together. There's a reason why we are a solvent city, and, and this is actually a compliment, that our city takes great pride in managing our finances very, very carefully. So, but our, our community is also aware of that, and so we have to balance that. And so we, we want to help as much as we can, but just understand, there, there may or may not be some legal implications of, of liability, right? I mean, that's, we're now doing work on, on something that's no longer in our control technically. So we have to be careful with that, and I just, I would not be doing my job if I did not, if I did not advocate for that careful planning. You know, we get, people, people trip on a sidewalk and they sue us. That's what happens in, in government. And so as stewards, we have to just be very careful, and, and, you know what I'm saying?
Well, well, maybe then I should be talking to the county.
Well, I still want to hear a little bit more about, what does the community want to do? Because I want to get a little more input as to, we're talking about preserve it, and we're also talking about some people willing to do some work. I want to get a little more flavor as to what exactly the volunteers are willing to do.
Well, before I, before I get into that, I'd like to pass this picture around.
And it's more dangerous. It's like, it's going to be very dangerous. And what it could be, it's, it's in the city limits.
It doesn't belong to the city, per se, but it still represents a city, and it's, it's an eyesore right now.
This, no, sorry.
I, I really appreciate what Jarb and Conrad have done over the last month, six weeks, in, in bringing this forward and helping us as much as they can. And I understand that they don't have a lot of money to spend, and we're not, we're not asking for a lot of money, and we're not asking for it to be taken back to original. We're asking for it to be preserved so that it doesn't fall down and crumble, and you, all you're going to have out there is a plaque for the fifth, fourth and fifth graders to come and look at, or somebody to graffiti. I think Mr. Duper's idea of not having electricity in it is a good idea, because I think that encourages homeless to break into it. Plus, it's a fire hazard, we don't know how good the wiring is. I would think a whole separate line with motion lights on poles would be better. And I would like, not like to see it, the water run to it too either, because if it, if there's a bursting pipe or something inside there, it'll, it'll destroy the whole thing. The water should bypass it and go right to the grove.
My take is?
Yes, sir. We would like to, to put a group of volunteers together, some of them here with me tonight, friends and supporters, and do some work on it, but we don't want to put the city at any liability either. So we need to get that resolved before we would do anything. And I think Jarb's been working on that. We don't, I don't plan on trying to get that done until first part of March. So.
Well, this, this council, probably better than any in any recent history, is very tuned into the, the, the historical significance of mission. Mr. Ship's been in here many times, giving us, schooling us on, on, on history. And we're trying our best with the development that is coming in to hold them to a standard that, that is, is reflective of our past, and, you know, there's some issues with orange groves and things that have come up recently, and, I mean, we could, we could have a whole three, four-hour discussion about the state of California and how they're ruining local communities, but that's my politics, probably not yours. But the reality is, is that's, those are the things we want to do, and so we are very receptive to that, just, there's, we want to be careful on how we do it.
I, I understand that, but we also, we also don't want to delay it another 17 years where it, where it's a pile of mud. I don't know if you know much about poor Frank, man built it, but he, he's not just significant in San Bernardino County as a rancher. He came from Palomar, New York, to Utah, helped Brigham Young bring his people out here, started a freight business in San Tim Canyon with a freight stop there, and ended up in Tombstone. And back and forth to different areas. So he was not just a rancher, he was a trail brazier, a scout, wagon master, just about everything it could be, and he only lived till he was 43. And I'm the last remaining Frank, and I would like to see it preserved before, and help preserve it before I'm gone. So, thank you.
That's all the requests to speak I have. Does anybody else like, would anybody else like to speak?
Okay, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Audrey Meyer. I am a resident of Loma Linda, and I am also a newly master in public history.
So I am a historical professional. Actually wrote my master's thesis on Bryn Mawr. And I really want to push for greater community input and transparency and collaboration with the things that you are already doing, Jarb. We really do appreciate going out of your way with all of these legal constraints that we're in, but I think there is more collaboration that can be done, especially with historical professionals. I'm very much willing to lend my time and expertise. There's a lot to do in terms of preserving historical buildings, that it goes beyond just preserving a building. So more so than security is hugely important, but we need to be careful of the actual structure of the house itself and how we set up that security. If we're going to be stabilizing walls, we need to make sure we are doing that effectively. So you, I am here, I guess, speaking in order to provide and kind of reach my hand out to offer some advice on how we can actually effectively preserve, because it's tricky. I would also recommend there are grants given by the state of California to actually have professional assessments come in and assess the building to tell us kind of some hidden things that may be wrong. I am 100% willing to write this grant. I need to make sure that that's okay with whoever's successor agency, et cetera, but that's where I'm coming from. It is vitally important that we save this property. As a historian, I recognize the power that this site holds. I just worked with the Loma Linda Historical Society to put on an amazing event at Bryn Mawr School this October. 150 people came and enjoyed and were thriving and really living in the history of this area. Local history is vitally important to the cities themselves, and so I am so happy that we're taking steps, but I want to make sure that if we take steps, if we spend money, we are doing so effectively. We're doing so, so that 10 years down the line, we don't regret any decisions that we made, because you didn't know. If you don't have the expertise, who can blame you for not knowing? But I'm here to kind of help provide that expertise, and if you are willing to talk and chat, I would absolutely be thrilled to.
I'm so glad you volunteered. I was looking, I was looking at item 15.
If you win, it's your item number 15.
15. You're looking at that right now. Don't go home.
Don't go home yet. Item number 15, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it sounds like we, no, go, that's fine. It sounds like we kind of have a plan, but we got lots of pitfalls that we may find ourselves into. So my recommendation is that you continue to work with Jarb. I think Jarb wants to work with you, see if there's a ways that you guys participate in the process. I mean, brainstorming out loud. We have a, a general plan designed for that area, and I don't remember right now specifically what's actually going to be going right around that house from memory. But I'm thinking that maybe if that's going to end up being a park, you know, maybe we do, maybe tap in some of our park funds and see if we can help, you know, since obviously we're expending funds to secure it, we should be able to maybe expand some funds to preserve it in the meantime. I truly believe... I truly believe that it can be preserved in a very pristine shape. I really believe it can become a museum. I know everybody's concerned about, we don't know when that's gonna happen. We're probably closer now than we've ever been to actually selling it. We're actually within probably next couple of months, the, the, the action. We have a number of, uh, large property owners who are actually interested in buying it. If you all recall, uh, the Heritage Park, those houses there came from other properties that had been sold, and whoever bought them helped fund the movement of those homes to Heritage Park. Obviously, we talked about moving this and whether it's feasible or not, and that may still end up becoming an option, we don't know. But I'm, I'm pretty confident that whoever's gonna buy it is actually gonna do a pretty good job of truly putting it in pristine shape. And I see it as a, a wonderful opportunity to create a small museum there, there's no doubt about it. So, it's just a matter of making sure that between that time and now, we're able to ensure that it doesn't fall apart and it doesn't get vandalized or destroyed in any way. So, I would encourage you to continue to work with Jarb, and if you're running into problems, email one of us and we'll see what we can do to, uh, take it to the next level. And I'm only speaking for myself, and I, this item on the agenda is really not an item that we can vote on. We can kind of agree by consensus as to whether we should kind of move in that direction. But, uh, we as a council have already kind of directed staff to do what we can to preserve it. So, it sounds like you all want us to go to the next step of not just preserving it, but making sure it doesn't really truly fall apart.
Dick Wiley from Loma Linda. Well, you're all well aware of who I am anyway, so, anyway, um, I, I'm getting a little frustrated from one point, not from as much the city. What if the county decides we're gonna get rid of it?
That's not an option.
Then?
It's a, it's a condition of that land. They cannot touch that.
Okay.
Whoever buys it, it's part of the condition of selling it, so that's not gonna happen.
There's been some preemptive moves we've taken to entitle some of that stuff, so we can ensure it's gonna be developed the way we want it.
With the way the state's been going, and you've been informing us quite a bit about that, I'm not happy with the state. And, in other words, you take everything away from everybody, but we want your money. And, you know, you're gonna get to a point where that's gonna go away. And the thing that, um, Jim Ship was talking about, if you came to our history fairs when we had them, and all the information that he's put together, if that never came, comes before the city or anybody that's in the city, your history's gone. And after years, you know, three, four, five, ten years, you get people move in here and they're gonna look at you and go, "Oh, what was this? This is a town of homes." You look at Redlands, one of the problems I have with that. All the people that put their time, effort and money into making that town, people come into town, Smiley Library, what's Smiley Library? Why is that such a big important thing? Well, they were one of the founders of the town. And this is the thing, and I'll go back quite a bit on the idea. If Citrus hadn't started in this town, who knows what you'd be sitting in tonight here? Because it was through a process of losing or not being able to sell and make the money off of it, that people sort of gave up and it got sold. And with that selling, it went to somebody else, and they tried and it didn't work. It wasn't that the citrus had anything to do with it, they wanted to put a hotel here and get people that are coming from the east out here to get some money. Well, these are things that, I go back quite often to different ones, and I say, you go to kids in school, where's milk come from? Oh, the carton? Where's the carton come from? The grocery store? Where's it go from the grocery store? I don't know. All your dairies that used to be in Chino and that area, they're gone. So, kids don't know what a dairy is. If you don't have packing houses, they don't know where oranges come from, the grocery store. And as this continues on, how many kids remember a rotary dial phone? I mean, this is as fast as we're moving, and if we start to lose this type of thing, our history's gonna go real quick. So, this is why I think it's very important to, uh, maintain as much of what we have, and I know I've talked to Jarb about this quite a few times, that if we keep a couple of the homes, what do you want to keep the homes for? It's an example of what was an era and a time in this town. And you go back to people, they can look at pictures, but a picture doesn't give you a feel until you're in it. And you look at some of these older homes, especially in Redlands, and you go, wow. What's the big deal about the house? Have you been inside and seen the woodwork? Some of that woodwork in there is something else. You don't find that type of craftsmanship anymore. So, that's what I say, you, you lose these things, and this is why, yeah, maybe I grew up with it, and I don't want to see it disappear, but the kids are growing, going so fast now that this doesn't make a difference. You can lose things in one or two generations. So, this is why I would push that, and I know your council and city staff is doing what they can, but when the state says, "We're taking it over," well, now they don't want the responsibility, they pass it to the county. The county's not gonna want the headache of putting money into it. And, you know, hopefully, the way it's sounding, we're gonna be able to have the council work with the society, work with the Historic Commission, and work with the town to get something going. Because I know one, a good example, we're here by the, um, Mission Mobile Home Park. There was a portion of an adobe there until there was a fire. Fortunately, I got in there the night of it, and I got pictures. After that, boom, they came in, they never got a permit to destroy it, take it down, it was gone. And we discussed it in the Historic Commission, well, they didn't have a permit. Well, you can't bring it back now. So, these are how fast things can just disappear. So, I would appreciate all of your help and effort to do this, and I know Joe has been frustrated with it, as have several others, but I think we got a little more insight out of you tonight that, uh, helps guide us in the way we're going. But I hope that, you know, we can come back to this town and say, "We've got a museum to put things and things to do that's secure." Thank you.
There was a, I just, made me think of, there was a video on the internet I saw. They took two young kids and gave them a phone number and a rotary dial phone, and gave them five minutes to figure out how to make a phone call. And I can't figure out if it was a put-on or not, but it's hilarious. Thank you all for, one more? Okay, we're gonna have to cut it off for one more, that'll be it.
Just quickly, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ron McPherson. I was born in Riverside, I live in Ninto now. I want to commend you folks for what you're doing to preserve this house. I see a very close parallel. My grandfather, after the First World War, started building an adobe house on what is now Main Street in Riverside. It was finished by my father and my uncle for my grandmother. I remember climbing up a ladder when I was just two years old. That house was torn down due to eminent domain. They widened the street in Riverside. Unfortunately, I didn't know about it, I had moved to Hawaii. So, I commend you for making the effort to preserve this part of history in our community. Thank you.
If I can give one more piece of clarification, there was some comment about what if the county sells it or, um, whatever. In the specific plan for that area, which is the overriding zoning document, it requires preservation of that structure, and any development or anything then will go through the city, not the county, for entitlement and permits. And in that process, they will be required to do whatever restoration or, or preservation for the entitlement.
Okay, thank you all for your comments, and rest assured, our council and our staff will be, uh, working hard on this issue. Okay, let's move on to item number four on the agenda, the weed abatement program. Don't leave, this is where it gets exciting.
There's plenty of weeds there.
Good evening, uh, city council staff and citizens. I am bummed out, it was a full crowd when I first got here, and I thought I was here for weed abatement.
You know how to clean out a room, I'll tell you.
Yeah. My name's Tom Ingles, I'm the fire inspector for this beautiful city. Uh, I am here to talk about what we did for the fall twenty eighteen weed abatement program. We, uh, start, uh, we, I started inspections on September twenty-four, twenty eighteen. I expected approximately four hundred and thirty-five parcels, uh, notices to clean property. The property owners were sent out on September twenty-seventh. Uh, if a property owner called my desk, I would give them automatic to a, uh, extension to clean the property. Went back out on October twenty-ninth on my second inspections. Uh, if the property owner hadn't cleaned the property, um, the city contractor would go out and do the abatement. And then, uh, we sent out, uh, the bill, the invoice on December twenty-sixth. I like to do it after Christmas, I'm not the Grinch. And then, uh, they were made to, uh, pay this bill by tonight, by five P.M. And, uh, we were left with six properties that, uh, did not pay the invoices, and it's our motion to, uh, put it on the lien and tax rule.
Said that the list get a lot smaller now, I was just saying.
Hearing, uh, anybody like, anybody like to speak? Hearing none, it's closed. It's the pleasure of the council. I'll second.
Move the item.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our consent calendar.
Move it.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries, and we'll go on to our old business. We have a, um, council bill zero-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-one and zero-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-two, modifying the wastewater and the water rates respectively. Um, do you want to speak to that anymore, should we?
No, this is a second reading, uh, for the, uh, the sewer rate increase.
Okay, so I guess we would need a, a motion to waive the reading of the council bill in its entirety and to, uh, direct the clerk to read by title only.
I'll make that motion.
So, real quick, and I, I know I realize I have to second this, um, but I was not here at the last meeting when all the discussion took place. Um, I do know that in, for the member, uh, or two of the public that are still here, um, we are forced into this, um, because of rates that are raised on other ends of the spectrum and that we have to ultimately pay. So, um, this is one of those things, I know I've, I've seen some, um, some public outcry about this particular topic also, and it's, uh, it's difficult for us to do. None of us on this particular council, um, want to raise rates on anything. Um, but unfortunately, this is a, a point where we have, we have to, so, that's it, that was my comment, just, I will second.
Thank you.
And just a general comment, we had a lengthy discussion on this item at the last time, and one of the things that, what ended up happening was that there still need to be some clarification to the public as to why we were raising the rate. They thought we were doing so to try to entice them to preserve water, but that wasn't, the, the reason we raised it was to increase our reserve fund that was needed under our bonding obligations. The cost of pumping the water has increased, and that was the rate of it. I think there's a little bit of confusion in the public as to the amount. Some of them thought there would be, you know, an extra thirty dollars a month, and it ends up being more like an average of maybe three to five dollars a month, which is still a raise, but I just, I needed to make sure that everybody was clear on the amount, so, anyway, those are just my general comments.
So, your motion was just for zero-one, correct? We have to leave separately, we can't combine them.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make the motion for council bill, uh, oh-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-one.
Let me second that. Okay, any further discussion?
The motion was, uh, to read by number and title only.
Thank you. It's entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, Establishing Wastewater Collection Rates Effective March fourteen, twenty nineteen, and Repealing Ordinance Number Seven Twenty-Eight." And you may go ahead and vote. And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, we, we have the same situation with council bill, uh, zero-two-one-nine-dash-zero-two.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, uh, read by title only and waive the full reading of council bill zero-two-zero-one-nine-zero-two.
Now, I'll second.
You can just leave those there.
It's entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, Modifying the Water Rates Effective March fourteen, twenty nineteen, and Repealing Ordinance Number Seven Seventeen." And you may vote. And it passes unanimously, thank you.
You know, it should be noted that I was been watching council meetings in San Bernardino, you know? None of their votes are actually by voice, everything's electronically. So, everybody votes on a computer and literally, it happens like instantly, but anyway. I guess we need to update our system.
There's no ambiguity as to what you voted.
Yeah.
Okay, new business, we have, um, a couple of resignations for some committees. Um, we have, uh, Susie Israel from the Trails Development Committee, who has served since two thousand and twelve, moved out of town, and so she's resigning from Trails Development. We have Mr. James Ship, who is here speaking tonight, having served since two thousand, um, on the Historical Commission, also has been here for a lot of other things. We're sad to see you go, and thank you for your service.
Do I have to move out of town now?
No. I don't think you have to, we'll, we'll run you out.
But, not to get too personal, but if you're not leaving, why are you leaving the, the commission?
Trying to divest myself of too many.
Okay, and very understandable, thank you.
Okay, so we have a vacancy on each of those, um, committees, commission, one committee, one commission. Do we have other vacancies too? Have those been all filled or?
We do, just the, the, um, additional vacancy on the Trails Development Committee.
Okay, so we have two, two there, and then one on the historical, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
I, I will try to convince the young lady to.
Did you get her name before she left? I didn't quite hear it.
She's in the hallway, so.
Okay, go get her, quick. And, uh, what should we do, uh, post it?
Well, Jim, thank you so much for your service. I, I, I'm assuming that you're here as part of this item, or just enjoy hanging out with us? I want to make sure we recognize you.
Yes.
I was here just in case there was any more discussions.
Okay. Okay, okay. And I, I'm hoping that we addressed that as best as we could. Not to your satisfaction probably, but, okay.
No, no, I think they rate, my, my personal payments would be much more than a few dollars a month.
Okay.
But, I just wanted to see if it's a big sell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you once again for all your, uh, service.
As the, the staff member that works with the Historic Commission, I do want to thank Mr. Ship. He's brought, um, not just leadership as, as the chairman, but, uh, years and years of historical reference and really a professional insight into the process of historical preservation and, and what we have here in the city, and he, he will be sorely missed. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so we just provided your direction, is that all we need to do?
Yes.
Okay, so now I think we have to open the housing authority, correct, and run a concurrent session here? So, we'll open the housing authority, um, I assume it's the same people here. Any items be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, any oral reports, anybody wishing to speak? No? Okay, we'll move on to the scheduled item, the joint public hearing of the City Council and Housing Authority pertaining to the sale of two-five-four, five-zero Sonora Loop and approving a housing disposition agreement.
Thank you. It is, um, like you said, a house on Sonora Loop. The current owner is part of the, um, first I- The current owner is part of the first-time home buyer program with the, the city for the affordable housing. Their family has grown and need a bigger house and are looking to move on. In working with our attorney and consultant, we have a list of several families who have submitted applications and are interested, have found one that is appropriate for the house and have been working with her. And it will remain an affordable covenant. Those covenants on that particular house are due to expire in, I believe it's twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-nine. So, we're just asking that you approve the agreement with the buyer and then the, the city council to concur with that. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and move LLH Bill R-two-zero-one-zero-one and Council Bill R-two-zero-one-nine-zero-five.
I will second that. Did, do we need a public hearing, or no?
No.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried?
I did, I made a motion about, yeah.
All right, well, we're here, we'll just finish with the consent calendar on the housing authority.
Move it.
Second. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? None. No chair member reports, no reports of officers, we'll consider that adjourned. Come back to the city council agenda. Any reports of councilmen? Reports of officers?
I did my part.
You did your part, you did quite a bit of your part. Okay, we're adjourning to February twenty-sixth, I believe. And we're gonna adjourn in honor of Colin Daly and Chad Sparrow. And we'll move on to the successor agency.
This is the confusing part, it's a successor agency with nothing to really deal with except bills.
Except what?
Bills.
Yeah. Any items be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any public comments? No? Consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's carried, and we're adjourned. Is that it?